Welcome to the June 20th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. And welcome all those that are here in our chambers and also those who've joined us online. If you'll join me in the opening prayer. Lord, thank you for this day and for the blessings that you've given us for this community and all that labor to provide the services in this community. For those, all those people that call this town home. We thank you for all the first responders, all the people that work on a daily basis to keep our community safe and give us the quality of life that we enjoy. Bless this meeting this evening, dear Lord. Give us wisdom and discernment as we make decisions in the best interest of our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have a ceremonial items. And Mr. Wilkerson, would you come to the podium and?
Thank you Vice Mayor Shackleton. Good afternoon or good evening, council members as well. Thank you for this opportunity to present tonight. Tonight, I'm here to recognize the Stars Award for the month of May. As you know, the purpose of the award is to recognize employees who go above and beyond their normal call of duty. Sometimes that means providing an extra level of customer service to both our internal and external customers. And sometimes that mean to lead when unexpected. Tonight recipients are actually two individuals. One is not here tonight, that is Matthew Miles, and the other is Tyrell Spivey, who works in the Parks and Recs Department. They are examples of what servant leadership looks like in the face of a disastrous situation. Matthew is a part-time individual. Well, he was a part-time, and then about a year ago, he moved to full-time. He's a groundskeeper again in the work in the Parks and Recs Department. Tyrell is a longer-term employee. He's been with us now since about 2017, so about seven years. He started off as a part-time as well, and today he's a lead person who's over the landscapers and groundskeepers. Each of these gentlemen do outstanding jobs, which is not surprising that they were nominated for this award. They were nominated for the award by Jacob Mansfield. Jacob also works in the Parks and Recs Department. He's the lead person as well. Following are the comments that Jacob mentioned in the nomination form. After a major rainfall in May, the Greenway Trail was heavily flooded, and some of the trails were underwater. After the water receded, several areas had a lot of damage and some trash and debris and things of that nature. Without even being instructed, asked, both Matthew and Tyrell stepped up and took the lead to repair and clean up the area. This included them working on a Saturday as well. They delegated work and led by example. Through their leadership, the Greenway was cleaned up and reopened within a very short time. Tyrell, you and Matthew are prime examples. That is not necessarily the title that makes the leader. It's more of the character and the action of that person that makes him or her a leader. And for that reason, Tyrell, you are a star. So if you would, please stand. On behalf of the Vice Mayor, the Council, and the great city of Murfreesboro, we recognize you as a Stars Award winner for the month of May.
All righty. Were there any signed up for the public comments?
No, sir.
All right, very good. All right, council, we have before you the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Can you pick one out from that? Okay, good.
I'll say the water peed me to it.
Ladies first, Austin.
How kind of you.
Okay, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye. All right, in old business, we have ordinance 24017, city code, chapter 32, and this is on the second and final reading. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion and second?
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye. All right, new business, land use matters, plan of services, annexation zoning for property along Butler Drive. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you Vice Mayor Shackleton, and good evening Vice Mayor Shackleton and members of the City Council. Our zoning and annexation item tonight is located along Butler Drive, along the west side of the existing Butler Drive, west of I-24. It's north of Joby Jackson Parkway. The annexation consists of two parts. One is three parcels that were requested for annexation by Mr. Eric Dill. Those parcels total 8.54 acres, and there's a companion zoning request on those parcels, which we'll discuss here in the next public hearing. In addition, city staff included an additional 5.87 acres, which is the right-of-way of the future realigned Butler Drive that is currently under construction. And so if you see on the map before you, there are, in addition to the three parcels, there are three segments of future Butler Drive right-of-way that the city has acquired or is in the process of acquiring, so that the entire realigned Butler Drive will be within the city limits once it's completed. And in speaking with Ms. Emerson, our city engineer, the completion date for this project is February of 2025. However, our contractor has been ahead of schedule, but no later than February of 2025 for the completion of that project. So we want to get that right-of-way, all within our jurisdictions as we are building that road. The subject property is located within the city's urban growth boundary. It's within our service infill area as adopted on the Murfreesboro 2035 updated future land use map, and it is contiguous with the existing city limits. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on May the 1st and voted to recommend its approval of the annexation at that time. The Plan of Services has been included in your agenda materials outlining how the city can provide services to the subject property upon annexation. The only item of note is that sanitary sewer is not immediately available to the subject parcels owned by Mr. Dill, so Mr. Dill will either have to get a sanitary sewer easement to extend sewer to his parcels, which I believe that he intends to do, or he will need to develop on septic. But I believe that he will, in the future, try to obtain a sanitary sewer easement to extend sewer to his parcels. Be happy to answer any questions with regards to this annexation and Plan of Services, and we need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? All right, we'll conduct a public hearing. This is for the Plan of Services, annexation of 14.41 acres. And well, the public hearing, you'll come to the podium, please state your name and your address. You'll have three minutes if you're speaking for an individual, or five minutes if you're speaking for a group. I will open the public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll see, we need a motion on Resolution 24R PS-16.
Move for approval.
Motion for approval and a second?
Second.
And a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye. All right, this is for the annexation. Let's see, that was for the annexation. We need a motion, do we need a motion on that as well, annexation?
Yes.
Yes, sir. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye. All right, and for the zoning, let's see.
Public hearing.
It's a public hearing, we need to do the rezoning of 8.54 acres, and we need a public hearing on that as well, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and I'll give a brief presentation.
Okay.
So this is for the three parcels that you just considered for annexation. Mr. Dill has made a request to zone it to LI, Light Industrial District, simultaneous with annexation. The surrounding land uses in the area are, there are quite a number of industrial uses, as you know, further to the north along Butler Drive, beginning with General Mills near South Church Street, and moving on towards Rich Products, Rich Products, and then down towards the Mali Plant, and then directly to the north of the subject property is the Kenny Pipe and Supply Warehouse, as well as a daycare center. And further to the south is the location of the future solid waste transfer station on city-owned property. That's the area that is zoned heavy industrial at the bottom of your screen. As I mentioned, the applicant is proposing to have the property zoned light industrial simultaneous with annexation. The zoning is consistent with the industrial zoning in the area, and it is consistent with the updated future land use map, which recommends a business innovation land use character for the subject property, and light industrial zoning is compatible with the business innovation land use character. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on May the 1st, and at that time voted to recommend approval of this zoning request to the City Council. We'll need to conduct a public hearing on this item tonight, and then vote on first reading. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Blomley? All right, we'll conduct a public hearing, same parameters as before, come to the podium, give us your name and address. We'll open the public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And I need a motion on ordinance 24O Z-16.
Move for approval.
Motion and second?
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye. All right, sewer allowance variance, Warrior Drive, Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and members of the Murfreesboro City Council. The next item before you this afternoon is a sewer allocation variance request on behalf of Avid Hotels. Avid is requesting an additional 18 single-family units in order to construct and operate a new hotel to be located on Warrior Drive. Our Water Resources Department has reviewed the application and confirmed that the additional capacity is available in the area, and the Murfreesboro Planning Department has also reviewed the application and is supportive of the request. Available if you have any questions.
This sounds good to me. I mean, four-story hotel, 95 units is what it looks like, and I'm assuming they've got their financing in place too to pursue this.
We need to get their banker's name.
Yeah.
Move for approval.
Yeah, second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye. All right, ordinance to amend the city code regarding the tennis and pickleball commission. Mr. Williams, let's see here.
What we're gonna call it, Pickleball Commission?
Yeah, I think Nate wasn't able to make it tonight, so I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Yeah, the ordinance is to basically rename the pickleball commission because of the development of pickleball at Adams Tennis Center and in other locations around the city in the future, and so having the commission expand its authority to handle that type of racket sport in addition to tennis makes some sense.
This ordinance change would be on first reading, is there a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Move for approval and a second?
Second.
All right, please read the.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye. All right, on motion, we have a charter for the sports authority, appointment of authority board, Mr. Tindall.
In April, council approved the application to create Murfreesboro Sports Authority, and this is continuation of the process to set up that authority. This will be council adopting the charter, which is taken directly from statute on what sports authorities can do in cities, and then appointing the board. The board members are listed on the council communication. They've all submitted questionnaires and applications that have been presented to council for their review. It's a good board, it's a strong board, I think they'll make good decisions as the sports authority goes about its work, and we've worked closely with Parks and Recreation Department because sports authority obviously will work hand-in-hand in supplementing their budget, which is the real purpose of the sports authority at this point. Happy to answer any questions.
Correct, under the charter provisions, it has three names, the applicants, and then on the council communication has, you know, seven names. Do those seven names need to be in the charter provision to make it official, or just stick with those three?
Yeah, that's, the statute just had the applicants listed in there, and so the applicants were taken directly from the application that was made before. I can't tell you why the legislature decided to do that, but that's how they, yeah, that's how it was written.
Thanks for all the work on this. This could be big for the city.
Any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye. All right, purchase of the MPD range, Mr. Tindall.
Yes, this is an item to approve a purchase or sell agreement for a range within middle Tennessee. For many years, the police department has sought a range that they could use to qualify officers, both in handguns and rifles. It's been exceedingly difficult to find one land, and then two, any type of range that could accommodate the police department's needs, which will only expand in the future as we grow with our number of officers. Right now, the land that we're talking about is used as a range, it's privately owned, so there is some development on there that makes it adequate so it can be immediately used. It's about 50 miles from here and takes about 50 minutes. It's very conveniently located right off 24. So we work closely with the owner, it was somewhat circumstances were a little difficult to get ahold of him, so it took several months, but we did, and he's excited about a law enforcement agency taking on the property and this operation, and so he's been willing to work with us. There's been a lot of interest in the property, but he's agreed to the price that we feel is fair on this land, and so we have a period of time for due diligence, so it'll be inspected, and we'll take a good hard look at it to make sure everything's adequate out there, but it looks like right now it's in pretty good shape. Happy to answer any questions.
Chief, I've got a question or two for you. Just for your officers, just to be qualified proficient, it's a lot of hours, correct, to be qualified proficient on a, not only a pistol, but a M4 carbine or a tactical shotgun?
Correct, correct. So just depending on the officer and their particular assignments, our SWAT team, you'll see them train every other week in proficiency in firearms. The officers to be able to carry a rifle have to go through a three-day course, and then they have to go through annual certifications to be able to maintain that status of carrying a rifle. Big challenge for us, and I think Mr. Tindall made it evident, was the training ability to get out there. So right now, we're at about 200 and, say, 80 something officers on staff, but we only have about 150 carrying rifles, and a lot of that, we've been slow-walking it until we can find a place suitable to train. So once that ramps up, we hope to go to a full deployment of rifles with the agency, and like I said, it's three days initial training, annual qualifications as well, so.
So this will just give us the ability, we're not at the mercy of other entities.
Correct.
We can truly not only pay our folks great salaries, but give them the best training and be the most proficient to keep everybody safe.
Yes, sir.
This allows us that flexibility.
Yes, sir, and, you know, we've tried to make opportunities of different ranges. I know we use Smyrna forever, but we can no longer use that. We used, of course, Smyrna, we couldn't use rifle training. We've used TWR eight times, but that's just not, it's a challenge to get those training hours in as we need, and, you know, we're doing private vendors right now, but that's complicated too, as well as scheduling, so.
Well, I think it's a great thing for the city, and I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I think it's a good thing. I know initially I had my concerns because it is not located here in Rutherford County, so there is a little bit of a drive, but I don't think it's realistic for us to be shooting rifles inside the city of Murfreesboro anywhere, and I MapQuested it, mapped it, and it's really not that far, and I like that it's turnkey, so I think that it's going to provide our law enforcement officers with a really great opportunity. I just hope that the city will make it available to other law enforcement agencies, whether that's for a cost or for free, but I would like to see us share in our fortune with this facility.
Absolutely, and that is the plan, and I appreciate your words. Fortunately, we're on 10-hour shifts, so the drive, we have to do an eight-hour training day, so typically an hour up, hour back, so it kind of fits in our scheduled workday to get that ability drive up and not incur heavy overtime costs or travel, so.
But having it at our disposal, it allows us to create that opportunity to work around shifts and schedules versus, I know if you go to Tallahoma Training Site with the Tennessee Army National Guard.
Right, right.
You're kind of at the mercy of those ranges and when they're available and things like that, or you're paid vendor, so.
Absolutely.
Me, I like the fact that we're taking the lead and we're going to partner with other agencies to use it as well.
We get to drive the bus and everybody else gets to. And absolutely, and as you look long-term, as we, I'd mentioned before, you know, FY34, you're looking around 465 projected officers, so you're potentially looking at 375 to 400 officers that will need a site to train and carry those, so.
Can we name it the Craig Tindall Memorial Firing Range or something?
Memorial? Memorial?
He's still here.
Oh, he's still here, okay. All right.
Little too quick on the trigger there. Okay. Any other comments or questions? And we have a motion, didn't we? We had a motion and a second.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye. All right, Gateway Boulevard, final change order, Mr. Griffith? Is operative word final?
Yes, exactly. Thank you Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Have for you tonight the final change order for the Gateway Boulevard extension. It was about a third-mile project to make a new connection over to Robert Rose Drive. The extension is a three-lane curb and gutter, I'm sorry, it's actually primarily a two-lane curb and gutter section, that's a typo, with sidewalks on both sides, included a new signal at the intersection of Robert Rose and Gateway Boulevard. Sessions paving submitted the low bid and actually came in almost $100,000 under budget, and this change order just basically adjusts the quantities to account for the cost savings on the project. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is the easiest changeover to vote on in four years. We're saving $100,000, so moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye. All right, another one, Mr. Griffith, Butler Drive realignment change order number one.
Yes, sir, Vice Mayor, this is a change order to actually add sewer to the Butler Drive project that Mr. Blomley would. Drive project that Mr. Baumley was talking about earlier, that's been on the annexation. December of 2023, council approved the construction contract for the Butler Drive Realignment Project in the amount of $7,39,011, with additional 5% contingencies. These additional items increase the contract amount to $7,645,248, resulting in the $606,237 change order. Again, most of these items is in regards to a forced main sewer line that's been added to the project to serve the area, and there was also some storm drainage that was added to the project. It also increases the contract days by 30 days. I would mention that the council has previously approved the actual purchase of the sewer line itself in your March the 7th meeting, and will be asking for reimbursement from the Water Resources Department from their capital reserve for their portion of this change order as well. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions or comments?
I noticed you did the $100,000 savings one first.
Yes, sir. That wasn't intentional.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, please call the roll, Mr. Russell.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith, purchase of liability auto property crime and cybersecurity insurance, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is our annual request to purchase a variety of insurance coverages, the one that Vice Mayor Shacklet just mentioned. The, all of the insurance policies being recommended are renewals from last year. They include from public entity partners, general liability, auto liability, errors and omissions liability, which includes employment practices liability and law enforcement liability. From public entity partners, we're also proposing to purchase collision and comprehensive vehicle insurance for all vehicles that are valued over $75,000. For vehicles less than $75,000, we self-insure, except if there's catastrophic damage from like a hailstorm or something like that, and so we would also be purchasing catastrophic vehicle damage insurance from public entity partners. Lastly, we'd be purchasing workers' compensation insurance from publicly, public entity partners. We've been, this is, I think, going on, this would be the fifth year that we've purchased those insurance coverages through public entity partners, and they have been a very good partner for the city. The commercial, so the next three insurance coverages have been brokered by the city's insurance broker, Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services, and those are commercial package property insurance, crime insurance, and cyber insurance. The first two would be from Travelers, the cyber insurance is from Cowbell Insurance Agency. I'd like to go through these really quickly to, starting with the ones that are the easiest, that the crime and cybersecurity coverage are, the premiums of both those policies increase modestly in dollar terms, but the scope of coverage has not changed, so those are pretty straightforward. The, with respect to public, the workers' comp and general, and the liability insurance policies, we're moving more, we're proposing to move to more towards where we're looking at those policies, what we're getting from those policies is excess insurance with administrative services for processing claims, and part of the reason, one of the reasons how we do this is to increase the self-insured retention, which does increase the city's potential exposure to pay claims, but that corresponds with a reduction in the premiums that we're paying. So what that, what that means is that if, if we don't hit our self-insured retention, that money comes back to the city. If we were to stay at the self-insured retentions that we are paying right now, we would have higher premiums, and so we would be guaranteed that we would have to pay those premiums, and then there, you know, there would be less potential for savings. So the overall dollar value, potential exposure of maximum amount the city could pay out in a year in terms of premiums and from the self-insured retention doesn't change, but it's, it's kind of, allows for some potential cost savings. And so the, those numbers are, the premiums, the liability premiums are going down by 16.3%, the workers' comp are going down by 2.4%.
Down, did you say, down?
Down, the premiums are, because our self-insured retention is going up.
I got you, because of what you just said.
The tricky one here is, is the property insurance. Property insurance, as many people who own businesses or homes know, the property insurance rates are going up, and the city is no exception, and the, Gallagher worked really hard to try to get the best available quote out there they could for the city, and the best quote was from Travelers, and it's still a 27.9% increase in the premium. I would, and in addition to that, the per occurrence limit on the policy is dropping from 400 million to 200 million. The, Quay Stallworth from Gallagher is here to provide background to, on what's going on in the market, and why the premiums went up so much, and what, in reality, what the practical effect of that reduction in the per occurrence limit would be for the city. I'm happy to try to answer those questions, as is Mr. Stallworth. I'd also like to recognize, if you have any questions about the coverage by public entity partners, Kelly Westerfield is in the back corner, worked with her for five years and has been a good partner, so if you have any questions about those coverages, the three of, we're all here to try to answer any questions you might have.
All righty.
Well, lastly, I'll note that overall, last year, insurance coverages went up by, the total cost went up by 16.5%. This year, it's only, it's only going up by 11.9%, so it is, the rate of increase is a little bit lower.
Than last year.
Than last year, yes.
All right, any questions, comments?
What about our loss ratio on these policies, are they really good?
With, you, well.
It's a relative question.
It's a relative question. I mean, we'll put it this way, you know.
Knock on wood.
We, we haven't had to file a lot of claims on our property insurance, because our per occurrence limit is $100,000, and, you know, fortunately, we haven't been hit with anything that would cause to go above that.
Is that increased relative in line with what other municipalities or other self-insure, I mean, I guess there's a national average, what's that average?
I'd let, I'd let Quay, if you want to step up the podium, I'll let him field that question.
Sure, it's a good question, so the insurance business is obviously one of averages, so to your question, Ms. Maxwell, the loss ratio for the property program for the city is pretty strong, and, you know, however, the provider being Travelers, you know, they insure, I would say, by and large, as many public entity groups in the country, okay? And so there's really three prevailing sentiments in regard to the property market. One is the rising, what do you say, the higher prevalence in natural catastrophe losses, and more specifically, this is some insurance jargon, it's secondary non-modeled perils, meaning hailstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, natural catastrophes that traditionally haven't been modeled to the same efficacy as a hurricane or an earthquake, and so when the modeling isn't capturing those losses correctly, and they skyrocket, which happened in 2023, I'd say of the 28 billion-dollar losses, single billion-dollar losses, I'd say at least 20 to, you know, 22 or 3 were either related to wind and hail, wildfires, or secondary peril. So situated where we are in middle Tennessee, carriers don't want that much exposure on their balance sheet, and so, you know, when you couple, you know, that underwriting concern with the fact that we had a valuation issue post-COVID with the inflation, and we had Hurricane E in it, which was about a $60 billion loss, they're collecting premium on, let's say, a million dollars, but then to rebuild that building, it costs them two or three, because that didn't track with the valuation. So you aggregate that issue across a $60 billion loss, and it causes all of the retail insurance markets to tap their reinsurance contracts, their prices go up, okay, and so they have less capital to buy reinsurance limit, thus they have less ability to offer more capacity or limit to consumers, like the city. So we did a full marketing effort on the property program, all markets, domestic and abroad, London, Bermuda, have some supporting documentation to outline, you know, the market trends from an objective standpoint, but the rate for the city is a little less than seven cents, I believe it's 0.68 cents per 100, so it's an extremely thin rate, even still, and we do it day in and day out, so we feel strongly for it, however, I do know the city isn't, you know, in the insurance business every day, and they may look at that increase and think that it's, you know, pretty aggressive, which it is, but it's certainly the best price that the market will bear today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What about the workers' comp insurance? What were you going to say, Tom?
No, no, I'm just leaning forward to listen.
Okay. Is our percentage going up or down, or is it steady?
In terms of claims? I think that there's always some fluctuation, and a lot of that depends on whether you have one or two significant claims. I would say that since we've been with public entity partners, though, our combined costs for handling workers' comp claims, whether that is through premiums, or whether through, and coupled with our self-insured retention, those costs have trended downward, and we are spending less on workers. We are spending, I think we are still, we're spending comparable or less than we were, say, five years ago.
Yeah, about seven, eight years ago, the city began hiring a safety officer who spent all their time monitoring employee safety and processes to make sure that employees were being safe, and so that has made a significant difference in the number of injuries. We have employees doing risky activities, so there'll be some injuries. We also changed about eight years ago the way that our workers' comp was funded and managed, and when I say funded, how, it's self-insured, so at that time, how it was funded and how it was managed. So those combination of things over the last several years have really made a big difference in our workers' comp.
Then I guess we, some people come off workers' comp too.
Rehabilitate and come back to work, yes.
Yeah, I would say the overwhelming majority of people who file a workers' comp claim return to work. Yeah.
I guess I've just been looking at too much Judge Judy.
I mean, there are some that, there's obviously some that don't, and one of the things that the city has been doing a really good job of doing over the last couple of years is trying to settle and close out old workers' comp claims.
Right.
All right, good discussion. Do I hear a motion on purchasing the insurance?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll, Mr. Russell.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. American Battlefield Trust sub-grant agreement, Mr. Tindall?
Rachel.
Oh, yay! I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good evening.
I was looking for Nate, and I didn't see him, so.
Good evening, this is to approve the sub-grant agreement with the American Battlefield Trust. The American Battlefield Trust has the opportunity to purchase approximately 31 acres located off Agri Park Drive. This property was significant at the start of the Stones River battle, and the purchase can be accomplished with a National Park Service grant, which requires a municipal participant to act as the pass-through for federal funds. After the land purchase is completed, along with state regulatory action, the land will be deeded to the city for incorporation into the Parks and Recreation System. The grant does not require a federal match. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
There are none, all move for approval.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. Robert Rose HVAC Equipment Contract, Mr. Elliott.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here on behalf of staff to seek approval for the contract with Train U.S. Incorporated to purchase HVAC equipment for the new Murfreesboro Water Resource Admin Building located at 316 Robert Rose Drive, in the amount of $98,763. This will be funded through Murfreesboro Water Resource Working Capital Reserves. The existing HVAC system has reached their life expectancy, and by replacing the HVAC equipment, we can better maintain and preserve the new building investment. I can answer any questions at this time.
So moved.
You don't have a question about who staff is, first?
No.
I'm just glad he announced himself that he was coming with this for staff.
Well, I'm just disappointed that Darren Gore will not be able to enjoy the new.
Yeah, we've got him a really nice office there, and he's not even going to occupy.
Nice cold air conditioning, and he's going to come over here and swelter.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. All right, we've got some board and commission appointments and reappointments. We have the construction board adjustments and appeals reappointment, and these are all recommendations from the mayor. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion and second?
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye, all right. Board of Zoning Appeals, we have some recommendations for appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. And a reappointment to the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Motion and second?
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye, all right, we have some beer permits.
Yes, we have one special event beer permit for Murfreesboro Little Theater. The applicant meets the requirement for issuing the beer permit per the city code, chapter four, alcoholic beverages. The special event permit has been approved already. So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye, all right, we do have a statement tonight before you. Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye, any other businesses come before council? Any other jokes or comments?
No jokes, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize this is Craig's official, I guess, last meeting, correct, Craig?
Well, yeah, you killed me off earlier, so. I guess it will be.
In memoriam.
Don't worry about that.
But I appreciate that very much, as it is. I appreciate all the opportunity, and I really appreciate all the work that staff has done to accomplish the things we have over the last six years, it's really the credits due to them.
Thank you, Craig.
Thanks, Craig.
Thank you so much. All right, any other comments?
You'll still be honorary staff.
You should be on staff for a while.
Yeah, honorary staff.
I got the T-shirt still.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Fourth of July?
Yes.
Coming up, so.
It is.
Workshop on the 11th, or council meeting on the 11th.
Darren Craig.
I think, I think the plan right now is council meeting on the 11th, workshop. Yeah, it'll be a workshop, it may have a lot. it'll be a workshop. It may have a lot of action items on that because, you know, we're skipping two meetings here, but that's the plan right now, is to have a workshop.
So workshop on the 11th, council on the 18th.
That's the changes, and you got to blame someone else.
Yeah, fire to the ground.
Fireworks at the Gateway.
Fireworks at the Gateway this year, yep. I don't know, Rachel, do you know the Fourth
of July plan?
Yes.
Share that with us.
I would love to invite everybody out. It's again going to be held at the fountains. It's going, I mean, you can see them from a surrounding area, of course, but the entertainment will be held at the fountains. We have Craig Campbell that is going to be with us as a performer, and he'll put on a really good show. He'll begin at 7:30, play till 9:00, and fireworks at 9:00 will be a beautiful show. We'll have a DJ starting at 5:00, so if anybody wants to see the show, I recommend getting there early.
And I think we should thank Middle Tennessee Electric for funding the fireworks show this year again.
Right.
I think three or four years in a row, they've provided funds to do that.
It's always something to look forward to.
They've been good partners.
All right.
If I could add one thing, I'd like to remind council and staff that David Ives Retirement Party is tomorrow afternoon at 2 o'clock here in council chambers. Just recognize David for his almost 20 years of service.
Wonderful.
To the city, and he's, he will continue to assist the legal department in a, in kind of a part-time basis for, you know, next few months, but I hope he can come out and celebrate his service if you're able.
Wonderful. All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Where is Aaron?